Good afternoon and welcome to the seventh meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your electronic devices. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your name. And if you're appearing before the commission to testify, please come forward. Introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in. That being said, commissioners, I see we have some minutes.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the thirty first, the forty fifth, and the second meeting, and the executive session meeting minutes of the thirty first and the forty fifth meetings as previously certained. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote the regular minutes of the thirty first and the forty fifth and the second meetings. The executive session meeting minutes of the thirty first and the forty fifth are approved. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's move into the public hearing. Calling agenda item number one. Application number one eight dash one three four eight nine from Mo and Jed Food and Spirits LLC. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is a member Doug Harris Morrison. He is present with counsel Wayne Luke. There are no changes in this case's report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Araya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This matter was continued from June seventh and August second. Public hearing kept open. This application has received two written protests, zero letters of support. How can it meet statutory requirements for the submission of this application?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners.
Uh, Mr. Luke, would you like, do you have any response to the protest that was suspended?
Oh, yes. The main approaches came from the condominium within a hundred feet from them. Yeah, well, a member of the condo was here last time. But Mr. Morrison got a hold of her and went over the whole, the whole situation with her. And I think he can just tell you what happened.
Yeah, she, um, her apartment is right over our parking lot. And prior to us taking over, they, um, there was really loud music playing from like twelve to twelve and one in the morning. And there isn't, on one side of our building, there isn't insulation, adequate insulation. So I assured that we would do that, not that we have allowed, we don't have music, so. But she said that it hasn't been, there hasn't been any problem. We've been there four months, there hasn't been any problem since we've been there. But it was the prior two tenants that kept her awake at night.
If you remember, the prior tenant operated out of the license category. They did not have an entertainment permit.
I do recall that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So I did talk to her and she, uh, she's, uh, understands that we're different people than we are.
And the protest, the two protests are from the same apartment complex? Is that correct?
I believe, I'm not sure, the second protest.
But both of the protests are similar in nature where they're completely, they're nervous or concerned about the noise, correct?
Right, and so, and when, I didn't talk to the second person because I didn't know who that was. The first person said that it was based on prior tenants.
Great, well, I would encourage you to be good neighbors. How's things been going?
Oh, good. We, uh, it's been a little slow with the kids out of town, but, um, by coming back today. And other than that, she, we exchanged phone numbers too, so she can call me if it ever does become a situation. She can just call my cell number and, and we'll take care of it. But I go out there in the parking lot and there hasn't, there isn't any noise.
Thank you.
Ms. Araya, is there any statement you'd like to make for the record?
Yes, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. With respect to this matter, we did receive, um, a message from the chair of Neighborhood Board Number Eight, which is the Makaliu Moliuli Neighborhood Board, claiming that he did not receive notice of this application. Um, putting on the record that Liquor Commission has certified mail return receipt of delivery from the Neighborhood Commission Office, which is the website official mailing address for the chair of Number Eight. Uh, most chairs in fact do use the Neighborhood Commission Office address as their mailing address. We always confirm on the website what is the official mailing address stated for the chair. And we have the return, um, uh, the certified mail return receipt, uh, for delivery to the Neighborhood Commission.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, you have any further questions or type of action?
Uh, motion to approve application number one eight dash one three four eight nine. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three four eight nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the calling agenda item number two. Application number one eight dash one four zero zero seven from Cotty Foods Pizza Hawaii. Mr. Zebakalau.
Aloha, Chair, members of the commission. Emmanuel Zebakalau, here on behalf of Cotty Foods Pizza Hawaii. To my right is Luther Pasqua Matteo. Uh, he's the district manager for Cotty Foods. We can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Araya.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, in this matter, administration will be requesting a two-week continuance public hearing kept open so that we may, um, resolve some discrepancies that may or may not appear on the affidavit of mailing for this particular matter. Accordingly, we request a continuance to the August thirtieth day public hearing kept open.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chairperson. Good afternoon.
I'm gonna swear you in.
Thank you.
Uh, do you swear that the testimony you give today is true and be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Randall Waddoff, uh, R A N D A L L.
Thank you.
Should I spell the name or is that not necessary?
Uh, yes, please do.
R A N D A L L. New word, W H A T T O F F. Um, I'm here today on behalf of the Malulani Group. Um, as the commissioners may be aware, uh, the restaurant at issue is going to be located in the new residential tower that's going up on King Street and University. And this tower is a major project. It's gonna be fourteen stories tall, has five hundred ninety beds, two hundred, uh, parking stalls, eighty-four moped parking stalls, and two hundred and eight bicycle stalls. My client is a local property manager and developer that own a small lane adjacent to the property, as well as some of the nearby buildings. About a year ago, we discovered that the mainland developers of this tower had decided to build their tower without providing any access on University or King Street. So there's no way to get to the restaurant or the tower on University or King Street. Instead, these developers decided they would just use the Malulani Group's lane to provide access for the tower. It's the only way to get into this tower. They didn't get permission for this access. They never informed the owners of the lane that they intended to use this access. They just started building. As you might expect, that's led to quite a bit of a legal dispute between my client and the developer of this tower. In this dispute, our primary concern is about the safety of people using this lane. Um, at this point, you may be wondering why is this relevant to this Liquor Commission proceeding? Um, and our concern here, your commissioners, is that by adding alcohol into the mix of what's already, what we feel, a very serious safety concern, it's gonna make the issue orders of magnitude worse. There's already significant safety issues here created by the presence of this brand-new tower. And by adding alcohol, it's gonna create a significantly greater, uh, risk. Now, if it's permissible, I brought some photographs that I would share with the commission that I think illustrate that. Uh, if not, I can describe them, but it may be quicker and easier. I have a copy I can share with applicants as well.
Let me, uh, let me, uh, remind you of one thing. So this is going to be continued, correct, Ms. Araya?
That's right.
So you will have another bite of the apple on the, uh...
Would it be more appropriate to raise these at the continued hearing?
You will have the same opportunity to bring it up.
Okay, well, if...
And this is the, this project is located on the Diamond Head Makai corner of King and University?
That's correct, yes.
I'm very familiar with that area.
Is that, is Kahuna Lane the lane that goes between, uh, along, uh, Kukua Market? Is that the access to Kukua Market?
That's, that's exactly right.
That's Kahuna Lane.
That's, and that, the developers are intending to use that lane for the sole egress and ingress to the, to the new development. That will be the only way in or out.
The previous building had an entrance on University, correct?
That's correct. One of the, um, you, if I may share my photos, I, the first document is actually a diagram of the building that may be helpful. Thank you. And I won't take up too much of your time. I just want to briefly kind of walk you through these. The first page of the exhibit is just a diagram showing where the new tower is gonna be located. I, I say new tower, it's basically done at this point. But as you can tell, there's no entrance at all on University Avenue. No entrance at all on South King Street. And the only access is going to be this little garage right here onto Kahuna Lane. Now, why that's problematic is because Kahuna Lane is a tiny lane that's used by this health market. And frankly, a lot of the folks that live in the neighborhood, there's some condos and older apartments that are kind of low-rise and behind the marketplace. And the lane gets used a lot just by people walking up and down it. There's a bus stop in front of the Kukua Market. Um, if you turn to the first page, um, or this, I'm sorry, the second page, the first photograph, this shows you a little bit of what's going on here. Um, this is where the developer is trying to widen the lane. But as you can tell, they've left the, um, uh, utility poles currently kind of in the middle of the lane. Some of those are supposed to come down at some point. But at the moment, you have the old lane, a slightly widened part, and right kind of smack in the middle, these old utility poles. Um, as you can tell too, there's no sidewalk around on the left hand of the lane. Um, and the floating, uh, power lines are really the problem here. If you look at the next page, um, this just sort of shows you how this lane is used. I'm looking at the second photograph. You see a couple of pedestrians using the lane. And those are the folks who live in these old walk-up, low-rise apartments and condos that are, that are behind there. And so this is a situation where, you know, pedestrians are using this lane on a fairly regular basis. Um, you turn to the next photograph, it's just another picture of a pedestrian using the lane. And you can tell here that this is not the sort of thing that's gonna be appropriate for a, uh, a lot of regular access. You have this foliage, you have individuals locking down it. There's no sidewalk on the half that most of the pedestrians use. Um, and there's only room for one car on the lane. Um, finally, the last photograph. Um, this is taken from sort of a parking lot that's, um, on the Makai part of the lane. You can sort of see there's a blue scissor lift on the left-hand part, and you can kind of see the entrance to the tower right there. And this isn't a very good picture, but what it's meant to convey is that after the tower, it gets, the lane gets even skinnier. You can't really tell by this photo. But to the extent that folks are using the, um, Makai side to exit from the tower, it's gonna be an even skinnier lane. I think it's, um, shoot, I, I hate to misspeak, but I wanna say it's seventeen to eighteen feet in this area, which is definitely not wide enough for two cars. So our position with respect to this application is that we have an unsafe situation and that adding alcohol to it will make it more unsafe. We think that ultimately, down the road, this may be an appropriate place to have a, uh, a liquor license. But as it stands now, until these issues are resolved between the street owner and the other residents and between the developer, we don't think it's appropriate. Um, I know that some of the residents wanted to testify as well. I know that Lori Hirohata, one of the, um, folks who live there, uh, but it seems like that's gonna be addressed by the continuance. So, um, I don't really have anything further to add, but if the commissioners have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So let me, um, Mr. Zebakalau, would you like to respond?
Sure.
Just to state for the record, a lot of the issues that you're bringing up, sir, are not issues that concern the Liquor Commission. They're between the, um, building department, uh, department, uh, the landowners and everything like that. So we, we cannot interfere into that. But Mr. Zebakalau, would you like to?
Yes, thank you.
It'll, it'll be on the record for the next time around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and, and you know, my, my first statement i- is quite similar. I believe that a lot of the concerns are more to be addressed towards the building owner rather than the commission and liquor license application itself. Um, in regards to the, the parking situation, um, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's common knowledge that it is a, a walking community. Uh, I reside in the community myself as well as, uh, we know it's a university community. Uh, and we're hoping to gain a majority of our traffic by foot. Um, there are, I believe, fourteen parking stalls that will be available to tenants, um, uh, that are on the commercial level. Um, but, you know, while we'll have available to do that, we're not gonna be promoting the use of them. Uh, we're hoping that a majority of our crowd will walk in, um, from the areas nearby. And, um, we, we're, we're a pizza establishment, um, who serves beer and wine a little bit, um, to the individuals who, who come and, and visit our locations. Um, of, uh, our total revenue, you know, liquor is a very small amount. I wanna say under ten percent of, of what we do. Um, and, you know, we're primarily there as a family-oriented establishment. Um, all of our other, uh, stores on the islands reach out to the local neighborhoods and, and try and be as involved as possible. So that's what we're gonna try and do here.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any question for the...
Any other locations you have on the island?
Uh, we currently have three locations.
Ms. Araya, would you like to respond?
Our resident architect.
Which tenant space are you at, based off the overall floor? I didn't see overall floor, I didn't read the investigative report.
Uh, so our tenant space is going to be the one closest to Kahuna Lane, um, retail. That's one six eight two square feet.
You're gonna have the outdoor dining?
Uh, we'll have a small area outside. Uh, I believe it consists of four tables. Uh, the, but we will be restricting any liquor service out there, uh, past ten P M.
Do we have any further questions or can I have a motion to continue this agenda item number two?
Two weeks, to the, uh, the thirtieth, public kept open, please.
Okay. Motion to, um, continue agenda item number two, application number eighteen dash one four zero zero seven for two weeks. Public hearing kept open. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one eight dash one four zero zero seven is continued to August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. A public hearing will be kept over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move into, uh, preliminary hearings. Agenda item number three. Application number one nine dash one four six five three for Multi Latin Foods LLC. Hello, come on down.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Uh, Alejandro Alvarado, owner of Alejandro's Mexican Food Restaurant, Kaliki Valley. Um, A L E J A N D R O, last name Alvarado, A L V A R A D O.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Alvarado, you've been there since two thousand and eleven?
Uh, no, I started the business in two thousand and eleven. I started as a little, uh, street vendor down in Waikiki on a little taco stand, like from midnight to four-thirty in the morning on Fridays and Saturdays. So I did that for about four years. And then I've been opening Kaliki for three years now, a little over three years now.
I heard you have really good tacos.
We try to make the best we can.
And that's a great time to have a taco.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm here to, uh, combine, uh, you know, maybe a little margarita and tacos together. Or, uh, yeah, jalapeno mouth from Waikiki Brewing Company is good.
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four six five three. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, application number one nine dash one four six five three is approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's it, I'll leave.
How far up in the valley are you?
Way in the back, about two and a half miles past...
Past the store?
Uh, past Kaliki Uka Elementary School, yeah, on the way, on the way up. There's a pink liquor store back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'd like to serve all you guys some tacos.
You're not too far from former Mayor Harris.
Okay, yeah. I know Ikaika something is right off the road, he comes down. Chicken and chiladas tonight, as you guys get out of here before it's there.
Calling, uh, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four seven zero four from Big Sun Make, uh, L P D, I'm sorry, Mr. Luke.
Yes, to my right is Yabaka, and his name is Kong K O, K O N G, for H O R two T U. Call her, please, please. I'm gonna be working with Wayne Luke as counsel. We have no changes to this case's report.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to approve stop transfer application number one nine dash one four seven zero four. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four seven zero four is approved.
Thank you.
I begin to request agenda item number five, request number one eight dash one three six three nine from Honolulu International Hawaii Inc., new business as Honolulu Country.
Yes. Roger Mina, food and beverage manager for Honolulu Country Club.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion, motion to approve request number one eight dash one three six three nine. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, request number one eight dash one three six three nine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, request number one nine dash one four eight nine four from Lanico Inc. Mr. Luke, is he like, would I, Mr. Luke?
Yeah. Yeah. Master Sergeant, manager is present with counsel Wayne Luke. Um, there, we have no changes to this case's report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Basically...
This is for Bachi Beach store.
Yeah, basically, that master, they have a part of the group that's taken over. So we're making sure, you know, what we're getting. And so there was a question at the front, and we just, uh, took it. And decided to just get everything approved.
You're requesting to extend in, uh, into the front portion?
The front portion, yeah.
The entry portion?
Yes.
But you folks, I'm sorry, I'm familiar with Bachi, I go there a lot.
Sure.
So the be, uh, front portion is already licensed, correct?
No, apparently when they, when in there, they found out it is not licensed. So that's why we're...
Oh, boy, okay.
That's why we're correcting everything up before they take over.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking there's no place to extend further, the street is right there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Motion to approve request number one nine dash one four eight nine four. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, request number one nine dash one four eight nine four is approved. This one, quick question. You still have the tomatoes, Alvarado.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll recover those.
Oh, can I take those tomatoes over here?
That's my favorite thing.
I learned that tomato, tomatoes do not belong in the refrigerator.
True.
I keep correct.
He's very concerned. I take care of tomatoes.
God, always, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move in to, uh, agenda item number seven. Request number one nine dash one four nine four zero for Free Spirits LLC. Mr. Wada, Mr. Troy.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Wada, appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Troy, member manager. This is a request to just change the layout of the upcoming, uh, New Wave Friday event.
Why don't you just, um, simply run by what changes are...
Sure, so the initial floor planner layout, uh, went up, uh, Queen Street. So on your, Queen Lane, I'm sorry.
Queen Lane, yeah.
So to your, the right, top right portion of the map. Uh, instead of doing that, they've decided to use Awahi Street. And so they went down onto that area instead. Because it was increase in size, they've also increased the security, so we have...
Uh, they have five special duty officers, uh, five private security hired just for that event, five standard security guards from Howard Hughes, and we're bringing in six additional security guards.
So a total of twenty-one total.
And I assume, um, you folks have made tenants that are gonna be affected by this closure, aware of the closure?
Correct.
So for Awahi Street, it's a private street?
No, so they've applied for, um, a street closure permit.
Yeah, by, sorry. Yeah, we have this one.
Um, and you folks have adequate lighting on that street?
Yeah.
Are you guys gonna hang lights or something?
Uh, I think they're bringing in the AirStar lights and, uh, whatever spotlights.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve request number one nine dash one four nine four zero. Second.
Fifty seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, request number one nine dash one four nine four zero is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't forget to invite Mr. Pobyakki. Uh, moving on to agenda item number eight. This is the Arts Cultural Merchants, uh, post-event report.
Good afternoon, Commission. Nicole Reed, R E I D, for Arts Culture Merchants at Setra Group. I am the secretary treasurer.
Commissioners, you have getting here from, uh, Mr. Nakagawa? Please.
He's delivering a letter for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Yeah. Mr. Perez is, um, we, we had to draft the letter for the, the, for the Free Spirits, um, approval, so he's...
Okay, all right. So, uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions of this week?
He's back.
Okay, yeah. We have, um, Mr. Perez, please.
Supervising, acting supervising investigator, Caprez, for enforcement. This is for the August first Friday. We received one noise complaint. Um, the noise complaint, there's a warning issued to an establishment for the noise complaint generated from the public. Our investigators went, they found it to be loud at the establishment, not the outside. And a warning was issued. There is also another warning issued to another premises that, or say, for, um, removing alcohol from within the license. So people were caught outside drinking alcohol. Again, these are against license, the licensees, the bars that are already there, not the event itself.
Commissioners, do you have any question? Commissioner Reed, maybe you would like to kind of run down your event. Commissioner, we have your report.
Right.
We'd like to hear it from you.
Okay. Um, so barring the details in the report, um, I was on site to manage the event from start to end. And, uh, I spoke with HPD at the end and asked for any incidences or issues. There was one gentleman who got an allergic reaction and had to go to the hospital, but it wasn't an over-service. Um, there was one individual who was over-served at a bar and they were warned, um, to manage it. But we've also electively put a door person outside their establishment, um, because they are electing to not do that. So we're trying to be proactive and stave that off by putting our own person on, on their door. Um, overall, our mural, um, was a success. We served, uh, about hundred and eighty people, maybe saw three hundred people come through. The event is open to the public. We only request to search large bags to make sure no one's bringing in liquor store alcohol onto the street. Um, music started at about, I think, eight fifteen or eight twenty, and it concluded right at, at ten. It was, um, by an event called the Hydro Lights, so it was more... It was um by a band called The Hydrolights, so it was more local reggae. Um for next month, we plan to do the same thing. Um we have two muralists from the North Shore, and we have a band of a band called The Two Sooners. So other than that, um I did pull the complaint uh for the event, and I I do continue to take decibel readings at the corner of the building that the complaint comes from, and I do monitor how much the street is producing, um both during the live music and after the live music um portion. And um so far, I can't find uh a continuous reading that puts us uh in violation. So we're doing our best to to mitigate the sound and even on premise um for the the people that are involved in this, they are trying. And it is nice when Liquor Commission comes around and says it's a little loud, and then it allows us to turn it down. Um but as far as this event is concerned, um we didn't have any issue. And after talking to HPD at the end, I asked them, do you think you're gonna need more based on this crowd? And um they said that the number that they had felt comfortable with the additional security that we provide. Um so as far as I can tell for September, uh based on August, we're doing alright, and the people that we're working with are satisfied with the job we're doing.
Thank you, Commissioners, do you have any questions? If there's no questions, let me uh for the record, let me ask, is anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this?
Chair, I will uh swear uh testifying, do you wish me to run a timer? Chair, do you want me to run the timer?
Uh yes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Do you swear the testimony you gave today is here and will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I agree, thank you.
To lunch, she was called downtown neighborhood chair and also uh president of Chinatown Business and Community Association. Uh I have been working in the call and there have been complaints, not all complaints official, and we are monitoring this situation. We wish them success, but we also need to keep the peace and sleep of the working class people. And um I think that there is a lot going on right now in downtown in Chinatown, not in a business sense, but also the uh homeless issue, drug issue, alcohol abuse issue. So there are a lot of things that happening at the same time, and the neighborhood merchants are working together to try to get more police support, because we've been very shorthanded on that department. And so good news is that um merchants from the notorious side of river of arguing going to split or get together, we spend many afternoons canvassing the neighborhood. And we think that um more people getting together is good, but not everybody can afford the time, the stamina and and the language to go out and participate in in these things. And in the case of First Friday, uh I know that I'm coming up last on on your agenda, so I will be presenting more. But I would say that many people don't share the same vision of what First Friday has become. In the past, First Friday is a community visiting walk, art walk, lots of art galleries, restaurant visits, people come and go, have a glass of wine, buy something, and then it's over. But it proved to be something much bigger, and now alcohol is being served on the street since the lockdown.
One minute remaining.
So it has created some stress to community, and so it stresses the public service, the police, our garbage and everything, just to keep several bar owners active and bringing in more income for that one once a month event. And I think we can solve the problem by other options, which I will talk to you later.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners, do you have any questions or?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Qua.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we're glad to see uh that the community is working together to benefit on downtown Chinatown and revitalize that, which is part of the uh mayor's uh initiative to make sure that we have some viable businesses and some outstanding paying customers in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
We have one more. Yeah, please.
Hi, Serena Hashimoto.
Do you swear the testimony you give today is here and will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear the testimony I'm gonna give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Um Serena Hashimoto, uh owner of Downbeat Diner and Lounge and Proof Public House, and I'm a resident of Chinatown and a professor at Hawaii Pacific University. Um and I just, I wanted to uh put forth my narrative, which is that uh those of us who are working with ACME to host the First Friday Street Closure are are putting up, we're losing over a thousand dollars a month to do this, to put the street closure in place for public safety. Uh the street closure is not benefiting the bars financially at all, it's um actually kind of hurting us substantially. But we believe that hotel streets should be closed to the buses on First Friday for public safety, and that uh we do, um I think all of us agree, we want more of an art walk, we want more of that type of community activity, and this is the way that we can see to do it. And we really appreciate all of the city services that have been willing to work with us, um and the mayor's support and your guys' support in helping us uh continue to see this event thrive, because this event is not a strain on um Chinatown, it's what helps Chinatown. Uh residents like me, uh my patrons, my employees, uh this is this is the safest night in Chinatown um that I can see. Uh Sunday night, Monday night, this is where we see more trouble, more need of city services. Uh but from what I've seen as one of the event organizers and participants is that we're doing good work, um and this is really working across the board, and we're looking forward to continue to do it. Uh and the vast majority of residents, um business owners, patrons, we all wanna see this continue um and in a safe way, which we're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, thank you very much, okay, so no action, thank you, Ms. Qua.
Thank you.
No action is required.
No action.
Okay, Commissioners, can I have uh
Yes.
Action on agenda item number nine. Nineteen, what, nineteen?
Yep. Uh uh motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items nine to nineteen inclusive, second.
They moved in second, all votes in favor. Aye, I vote aye, adoption of decision in order for agenda items number eight to nineteen inclusive is approved. Moving into adjudication.
Uh good evening Commissioners, uh Ms. Rai, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel here for the uh prosecute uh prosecution for adjudications, items numbers twenty through thirty on the agenda.
Thank you very much, calling agenda item number twenty, legends.
Me though, record show that I'm making a special appearance for legends, the owner John Harrison, who was asked that this matter be continued. He just got back into town last night. He would, he wants to come here and make an appearance on his own.
Do you have a date certain you would like?
Um we agreed to.
We agreed to next available.
You have no objection?
No objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty, legends to uh the next available, second.
Moving second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number twenty is continued to the next available date.
Thank you, Mr..
Calling agenda item number twenty-one restaurant, uh Japanese restaurant, Akki.
Uh licensee won't be appearing tonight because they've uh submitted a written plea to no contest and a waiver of attendance tonight.
Motion to accept the plea uh and the written waiver of appearance, second.
Moving second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the no contest plea and the written waiver of non-appearance is approved.
Your recommendation, Ms. Neely?
Um the recommendation for this violation um is a five hundred dollar fine. This was a licensing manager not registered to the premises.
And to your knowledge, has the um has the violation been corrected? Have they currently registered?
Um that I'm not sure about.
Okay. Alright, uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Moving second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Pure Hawaii Hawaii Gentlemen's Club.
Good afternoon, James Tennant, authorized agent for Green Chateau.
Okay, the charge is on or about December ninth twenty seventeen um in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee uh and or Paul Marino and Cassandra Gonzalez Gomez possessed, distributed, or used illicit or legal drugs or narcotics on the licensed premises in violation of Rule three eighty-four seventy point oh five A of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Tennant, would you like to plead, would you like to admit the allegations, deny the allegations, or plead no contest to the allegation?
Uh no contest with explanation.
Okay, motion to accept the plea, second.
They're moving second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars for this first violation.
And before I allow Mr. Tennant to uh comment, and can you please explain what happened?
Okay, so um Liquor Commission investigators found two individuals um in the V I P se- VIP section of the premises um with two small Ziploc bags containing a white pottery substance, which HPD subsequently
And do we have a police report?
We do not.
Uh, Mr. Tennant?
I did some printouts of, can I hand them to the Commissioners?
Uh no, this is
Oh.
Unless you're going to uh deny the allegations and we can go into
Okay.
contest the case, we're not accepting evidence.
Just no contest, um my explanation would just be, we don't condone illegal drug use at our venue. We will continue to search all guests entering the venue to the best of our ability. We've posted additional signs that show no drug use, we're a zero tolerance venue all around the venue. And as well as it's to my knowledge that the case civilly was thrown out, so I think that's why there's no police report.
Um the prosecutor uh stated that this was in the VIP section. Can you please describe the VIP section for me?
Uh it wasn't a VIP section, it was an area that we roped off for bottle service, and the the couple were pulled out of outside, it was an outside concert that we had, and brought into the venue to be investigated. And that was the area that they brought them into.
So they were not present there?
Not in that area.
They weren't patrons?
They were, they were patrons of the concert that was being held outside in our parking lot.
Okay.
And
So they were outside in the parking lot?
And then they were brought into that area to be investigated.
But the parking lot was part of the extended license premises for that event, correct?
It was not extended license, so we just kept the license.
You folks had a concert outside.
But no extended license.
So there was no alcohol service outside?
None.
What event was this, Mr. Tennant?
What concert was this?
This was in December, uh hip hop concert with Khalifa, is the name of the artist.
Right, well, I'll remind you that this is a very serious violation, and you are
Yes.
responsible for all of the uh activities and conduct on your licensed premises.
Definitely.
Mr. Prosecutor, would you like to add something?
Uh can I call Scott Perez, do it?
Yes, you go.
Do you swear you went? Do you swear that the testimony you give today's here will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Acting supervising investigators, Capres, this is a citation that I issued. Uh upon and upon observation, the two individuals in question were already in this area. So I was able to watch them pass over the baggie to each other. But they're already inside, they were not removed from the outside, they're already inside.
So you misrepresented what happened to this commission, Mr. Tennant?
That's what was brought to my attention from our security.
Where were you at the time?
I was not there at that location, at that area.
Um so basically, any of your employees could have observed the same thing that Mr. Perez observed that evening? He said that he observed that. So they were in an area that was not hidden from your employees and could, they could also observe this illegitimability occurring?
Correct, correct, and we do search everybody to the best of our ability, I mean.
I'm saying that this was happening right in your licensed premises. Our investigator observed it, which means that your employees who also have eyes could have observed it as well.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you.
Yes.
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 So they could have observed it and didn't or observed it and didn't do anything about it?
I don't know, I I can't agree to that.
Is that accurate? Yeah.
Mr. Tennant, maybe I should comment on this. You've represented this client many times, and you seem to have a disconnect on what's actually going on and what seems to be happening. My recommendation to you is to be informed with the necessary employees, be aware of what the event was, whether you were there or not, if you're gonna be making representations before us.
Yes.
We're taking it in in to consideration that you are giving us proper representation, and then we find out on another hand,
Correct.
straight hand knowledge that it's not as what you represented. So what you represented today, obviously your source of information is incorrect.
What I represented is that I said that the case, I found out that the case was thrown out civilly or criminally?
No, the representation of where the patrons were caught, which you were saying that they weren't in the VIP section.
Right.
Right?
That's what we were told, my security was told by the by the people that were accused of this accusation. I've, this is, look, this is our first uh offense of this type of nature, so I've never dealt with something like this. My whole point here is that we don't condone any of this. Our security doesn't condone this, our staff doesn't condone this. We pleaded no contest to this, and I just wanted to explain that we took extra measures now to make sure this doesn't happen again.
And the extra measures are posting signs.
Posting signs, continuing searching, letting all our staff know to look for these type of things.
In the designated area that was stated, what is your staff ratio to the people there, or what is your staff ratio to the people attending? So for fifty people?
We had, for this event, there was over twenty-five security, and there was only four to five hundred people, so it's a very good ratio. We do our best, you know, we can't control what people decide to do in their life, you know, it happened on our premise.
Unfortunately, yes, it did happen on the premise, right, and you still are responsible.
Unfortunately, indeed, yeah. And exactly. Of course, that's why I plead no contest. Just wanted to explain what we're willing to, you know, we're trying to do so this doesn't happen again.
We'll also take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Well, let me just make a comment, which you said, you're not responsible for what other people do, you are responsible.
Exactly.
You are responsible, if you don't wanna be responsible, then perhaps you should surrender your license on these events, because if you're not there and you relying on somebody that is misrepresenting the truth, and it makes you as a as a promoter look bad, or the authorized representative in whichever manner you are acting, we have some serious concerns.
Anything further, Commissioners? Um my motion is to issue a fine of two thousand dollars, second.
They moved in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, uh uh excuse me, agenda item number twenty-two, a fine of two thousand dollars will be imposed.
Thank you, Mr. Tennant.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Pure Hawaii's Gentlemen's Club.
James Tennant, authorized agent, presenting Green Chateau.
Um as a preliminary matter, I'd like to move to amend um part of, amend the charge, um it uh specifically states beer or water pong was the unauthorized entertainment, when in fact it was dark horse.
The charge has been amended for the record. Ms. Neely, would you like to read the charge?
On or about March twenty-third, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee had some form of music, dancing, and or entertainment, including but not limited to electronic gaming devices, card playing, and table games to wit dark words on the licensed premises without prior authorization or approval from the Liquor Commission in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash forty forty-seven point one A. forty seven point one A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second dollar in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty three, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Lee?
I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars for this first violation. Uh there were three unauthorized dartboards found on the premises.
Mr. Tennant? You have any comment?
No.
Are the dartboards still there?
Yes.
Have you folks requested to
They're they're not being used right now, so we wanted to make sure we go through the proper channels.
need? So you folks are know what those proper channels are, that you need prior approvals from the commission?
Yes. Yes.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second dollars in favor.
Hi.
I I vote I agenda item number twenty three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty four, Cafe Melody, restaurant, Pottery Queen Bar.
Uh licensee has requested a continuance for um for this case, uh I have no objection, uh you've agreed to continue to the next available. Their end date.
Oh note for the record, this is gonna be the third continuance, so if uh licensee is pretty able to appear at the next hearing, we may
Correct.
think about moving for a default. So this uh motion to continue agenda item twenty four to the next available date. Second.
Move in second dollars in favor.
Hi.
I I vote I agenda item number twenty four is continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number twenty five. Cafe Melody, I'm sorry, excuse me, Princess Palace.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. James Lee representing Princess Palace, stated to my right is Suk Cha Choy S U K C H A, last in C H O Y.
Okay, um on or about April twelfth twenty eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee's employee Susan Alcoziba whose conduct licensee is strictly accountable for under rule three dash eighty four dash seventy eight point zero one A consumed liquor while on duty on the license premises in violation of rule three dash eighty four dash seventy eight point zero one B of the rules of the liquor commission in this of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Lee, how would you like your fine to plead?
Uh yeah, we entered the plea of no contest and also let the commission know that the Susan Alcoziba no longer works there, she had been terminated.
Um motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Move in second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty five, the no contest plea is accepted.
Lee, uh while there were previous violations in two thousand six and early January twenty thirteen uh for adjudication purposes, this is a first violation, so I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Lee?
We will.
So I should that you were mentioning that um the employee in question uh has been terminated?
Yes, ma'am.
Um motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
The movement second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty five, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty six, Princess Palace.
We're gonna waive the reading of the charge, 'cause I've already spoken to the corporate counsel.
How would you like?
And we're gonna enter no contest on this case as well.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
The movement second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty six, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Lee? Uh this is a first violation, so I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars. This case involved the licensee transferring business prior to commission approval.
Mr. Lee, any comments?
Uh no, other than to say that there were some mishaps with the paperwork, so instead of a release and settlement and release between the landlord and tenant the the bill of sale somehow got mixed up and then it was submitted to the liquor commission, so there was a file of paperwork.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty six, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty seven, Nordstrom Lucilios.
Um licensee will not be appearing because they have submitted a a written contest plea uh plea and waiver of attendance at the next hearing.
You have no objections?
I have no objection.
Uh motion to accept the no contest plea and uh the waiver of appearance. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty seven, the no contest plea is accepted and also the waiver of non-appearance.
Um this is a first violation, the licensee failed to report a new officer slash director within thirty days' collection and I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty seven, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Moving on to agenda item number twenty eight, KS Market. KS Market, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah, there you go.
Thank you for your suggestion.
I I can just hi. Uh they have a problem speaking in this, so they just have no problem.
Okay, so let me, are you going to interpret for them or would you like an interpreter?
That's okay, I'll be interpreting, but actually uh Mister will be speaking, so I don't think we'll be needing interpreter.
You are. Very good, thank you.
Okay, the uh
Sorry, could you identify?
Yeah.
Yes, uh J W Lee uh doing business as a KS market. Richard Tachibana.
Can you please spell your last name for the?
Richard Tachibana, T A C H I B A N A.
Uh on or about August fourth twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to immediately prevent or suppress any violent, coercive, disorderly, looted, immoral or unlawful conduct of any person on the license premises to wit possession of gambling devices promoting gambling in violation of section two eighty one dash seventy eight B uh section B six of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Lee, how would you apply the plea?
They're going to enter the plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second dollar in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I agenda item number twenty eight, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Lee, this was a first violation and I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars um. The undercover HPD officers found six potter bowl machines um on the premises.
Is there a reason that is not noted in the in the charge?
Uh the number of machines?
Or the type of machines, it's uh we have possession of gambling devices and promoting gambling, but is there a reason why that the specific devices and the number of devices is not in the charge?
Um I guess it's there's no specific reason.
Alright. Mr. B?
Uh apparently the the manager who had been minding the store, he had some drinking problem, etcetera. The establishment has been sold since then, uh so they they got stuck with this citation.
When was it sold?
October.
October?
In the book.
October.
What, this year, last year?
This.
Last year.
At the time of the violation, were you the owner of this establishment?
The time of the violation, were you the owner? Who was the owner of it?
J W Lee.
J W Lee was?
Yeah, J W.
The uh Mr. Lee was, J W Lee.
So they're representing that the that the license or the premises had already been sold or transferred at the time this violation occurred?
No, uh hang on.
Uh J W Lee. Yeah, he was the owner.
Sorry.
Of course, I was there either at that time.
Sorry, uh my mistake, he was the owner and operator.
Alright, uh but they are no longer the owner and operator of this establishment?
I guess the obvious question is this is a market, yeah? This is a supermarket or market?
Uh yes, yes, it is.
So there were six machines present. Was it in a back room or was it in the middle of the aisle?
Back.
Back room.
Back in the back.
Back room, were you aware of this back room?
Uh separate, they separate those from the side.
I think I believe there was a partition.
So were were they aware that this type of activities was happening on their premises?
Well, did you know about that? That the game machines were there?
The the machines were there, yeah.
You were aware of that?
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, they they knew about the machines then. Did you know that there were gambling machines? Did you know that there were gambling machines?
It's it's a game machine.
I guess their understanding of that machine was it was it's a gaming machine. So you you were not aware that that is a game machine?
Uh no, I was I I figured it's a game game machine.
Yeah, they they thought they were just gaming machines.
Um and are you folks currently operating or owning any part of another license premises right now?
Fine, do you have any other uh it's convenient today?
No. Completely.
No, none whatsoever.
So Mr. Lee, you represented that the manager was managing the store and drinking problem?
No, he's he was he's in fact the owner.
The owner had drinking problems or you related to the fact that it was his fault, so to speak, yeah?
Yes.
And he was part owner?
I think he was a hundred percent owner.
City owner?
Yes.
He was the hundred percent owner?
Yes.
Then in which capacity is Mr. Tachibana then, if he's hundred percent owner?
Uh when when he started the business, I I worked with him. And I I helped him.
You you were working in the management business?
Well, in a sense, it was, actually I was just kind of an assistant because I was helping him because he had the language problem. So I was I was helping him with the business.
And you're an officer with the J W Lee?
Yeah, yeah, I was working with him at that time.
In which he was the owner hundred percent at the time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not on the license at all?
He was, no, he's he's the one that uh complete the owner, he was.
He did not have any uh uh in what is it, the ownership interest?
Yeah.
Not Mr. Tachibana. But you currently have ownership?
Yeah, what's happening here?
We're welcome.
Do we have a right? Is he still appearing here?
He's not the licensee, I would like a point of order.
Okay, well uh there he is here, has the the capacity of the manager of the store, he was Mr. Lee was the owner.
Okay, so he was just a manager or an employee?
Correct.
Is he an authorized agent? How did he receive this service?
Is your name on the uh the liquor commission as an agent? How did you end up with this notice?
Oh no, it was sent to him.
It was sent to him?
It was sent to.
And he he has been he has been representing?
What? Yeah, so I I I decided to represent him, the way I need to represent him because he has health issues.
Okay. Uh apparently Mr. Lee has authorized him to be the his agent, authorizing, he's got health issues.
Okay, alright. You have any, uh so are you, do you still work on the license premises? Are you still helping him?
No, no.
No, the I think
No.
it's been transferred, it's been transferred to somebody else.
That that, yeah, that's the business was sold to somebody else.
Okay. So
Afterwards.
So okay, let me see if I got this straight. You are working for or with?
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lee. He was the owner of this of KS market on August fourth two thousand seventeen.
KS market, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Okay. This violation occurred on August fourth twenties two thousand seventeen and then since then he, Mr. Lee, was not here and this is sold the business to a third party.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh I'm sorry, Ms. Lee, can can you verify the ownership of the the license?
Um I I think the licensing supervisor has stepped out to pull something up from um the licensee change history for this licensee, but but we're gonna have to wait.
We want to recess?
Joint recess?
Who's Tachibana?
Yeah.
In twenty ten, Mr. Tachibana apparently was the registered manager for?
Uh he was a managing member.
A managing member, okay, so the according to the the license transferred.
So it transferred from
Okay, so uh the licensee change history shows transfers taking place in twenty ten and also twenty eighteen. So during the time period of twenty ten and twenty eighteen, hold on. Well, as of twenty fourteen, uh Mr. Tachibana was uh registered as the authorized agent for this licensee. So I can confirm that the the violation took place between those two transfer dates because twenty ten and twenty eighteen. The only thing we have a record for Mr. Tachibana is dated as of twenty fourteen.
So so the but this this decision in order will be served on the current owner?
Current licensee, correct?
The yeah, current licensee.
Not the past owner.
My knowledge is is um I mean the notice of hearing was served on the cashier who left her number and that's who I called and she referred me to her boss, who she said was Richard Tachibana.
Okay, okay, alright.
For the record, do we have the right people informed about?
Well if uh if and when this is cert- the decision in order will be served on the current licensee who I believe is not present, is that correct?
On true.
And the the
The current current license is not here.
Who's that?
It's a it's a partnership.
Sukisana is not present. That's the sole officer uh director and stockholder for the current license.
Yes, I see. And Mr. Tachibana is not the authorized agent for the current licensee, is that correct?
Um the the authorized agent uh date shows um uh July of twenty fourteen. Which would predate the time when the license was transferred.
Alright, um what we're gonna do, Mr. B, you understand? Mr. B? What we're gonna, what we're gonna do is um continue this matter
Okay.
so that the prosecutor's office and your client can figure out that we're serving the right individual and that he will be issuing a fine to the current licensee and they should be aware that this violation is being adjudicated.
That sounds reasonable.
Um
Why don't you continue to custody please or the?
Um well
Well, he entered, he's the one that entered the plea on behalf of the
Right, and if you're if you're not authorized to represent the licensee then you are not authorized either, so we would like you folks to take the time with the administration and with the prosecutor's office to sort this out
I think so, I think that's a sensible thing to do.
before we before we properly adjudicate this.
Can you can we have a motion to withdraw this?
Okay. I would recommend that the plea get withdrawn. I would recommend a plea get withdrawn or you're not the proper
Oh, okay, then uh I guess uh under the circumstances, it's only proper they withdraw the plea and they will continue this matter.
Yes.
Perhaps have the the most recent establishment order be present.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, um so uh the the withdrawal is approved. And the I mean the the plea is withdrawn and my motion is to continue agenda item twenty eight against KS Market to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second
So the move in second, all votes in favor.
Hi.
Aye.
I lose our agenda item number twenty eight, is continue to the next available date, point of order, uh. Do we need to withdraw charges?
Accepting, no contest, agree.
Set stance, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Lee, thank you, Mister Tachibana.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Let's move on to agenda item number twenty nine, Dole Plantation.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, my name is Lisa Baile, B A I L. I'm the attorney for Castle and Cook Properties Inc., doing business as Dole Plantation. And with me is Troy Fukuhara, F U K U H A R A. Who is the Vice President and Assistant Secretary of Castle and Cook Properties Inc.
Honor about June twenty third, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor. Or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Edna Lynn Nakapui. At the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty one. Seventy eight B one A of the Hawaii Rice Statutes. Ms. Baile, how would you find that to plead?
Uh my client would like to plead no contest to the allegations in the notice of hearing, and with your indulgence, I would like to make some remarks to explain the context for you to consider in the penalty basis.
Uh motion to accept the no contest, please, second.
The move in second, all votes in favor.
Alright.
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number twenty nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, uh this is the first violation, so I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars. Ms. Baile.
We uh I would like to make some remarks to take exception to some of the characterizations in the investigative report, to put them in context for the Chair and the Commissioners. Uh and also request leave to explain some of the remedial measures that have been implemented since this incident on June twenty third. Uh first, the employee involved, Jessica Dakawag is a reliable, honest, and very good employee. Uh she has no criminal record, she personally does not consume or buy alcohol. She personally was very shaken by the events of the evening, and especially the charges against her personally. She was not familiar with this product, and let me explain to you why that is. Uh the canned alcoholic beverage was a new product that had just gone out on the floor at Dole Plantation. Just a few days before this incident. Uh the product can is similar in size and shape to Monster Drinks. Uh and I would like to uh show the Chair and Commissioners, not as evidence, but for demonstrative purposes only. An illustration of how this can looks compared to the other Monster Drink cans that are sold at Dole Plantation. If I may pass these out?
It's noted for the record that this is not evidence, this is for demonstrative purposes only.
Uh if you have the photo in front of you, and I apologize that I probably didn't put it, Ms. Neely, she has it in our disclosures. Um our employee Jessica did confuse this new product uh with a Monster Drink. Uh and did not understand it to be an alcoholic beverage, Dole does sell these Monster Drinks on the floor, that's the product, it's the same. Size and shape can that she was familiar with. This was a new product, so twenty four cans arrived at the store on May fourth. On a trial basis, so this was not a big promotional item, these were twenty four cans of a new product. Uh as best we can identify, the product was placed on the floor at Dole Plantation on June fourteenth or fifteenth. The product was first sold on June sixteenth, two cans, to the same customer. And this was the second sale of the product on June twenty third that was involved in this incident. I also wanted to note some of the inconsistencies that we observed between what we heard from our employee. Uh what the minor statement says and what the HPD statement says. If called to testify, our employee Jessica would say that because she confused the product with the Monster Drink. She did not think it was an alcoholic beverage, and therefore did not request ID. Uh in contrast, the minor's statement form says that the clerk stated, can I see your ID? Oh, never mind, it's three dollars and nine cents, thank you. This is what would contradict what Jessica would say if we were having a contested case hearing and if she was here. In further contradiction is the Hawaii Police Department report of this incident. Uh which says regarding Jessica, that she checked Nakapui's ID card, and then gave it back to her. So we have our our employee saying, I did not check the ID, yeah, yeah.
And so, man, in all due respect, people are not here to defend themselves.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not going to allow you to elaborate any further. This is all hearsay, all hearsay, we we understand, I would just like to make one comment, okay?
That's fine, yeah. It's, yeah.
So are you saying that this Kona Brewing is the new product?
The Kona Brewing can on the right is the new product.
The Kona Brewing that clearly says ale.
Yes.
Golden ale, and your uh clerk did not recognize this as alcoholic beverage?
That.
It clearly states here.
We we have uh sat down with her, English is her second language, and she's not a drinker, and she didn't recognize the word ale. She's not a drinker, she didn't recognize the name uh Kona Brewing company.
Okay, understand that, but before you put, before you put this product on the floor.
Yeah.
Did you have any additional training to all of your clerks that would be have access to sell alcohol?
There was no, yeah.
That is your responsibility, ma'am.
Yeah, there there was training, and I want to assure you of that, we do have training records that we can make available for all the staff. Not just for Jessica, and not just for this product. Jessica did attend training in two thousand fifteen, and we have records of that, if you would like to see them, and, yeah.
You're you're missing, excuse me, not to be rude, you're missing my whole point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You put a new product out, right? And you're telling me that she went through training in two thousand and fifteen? But she did not have any training for this new product that you were selling to the general public before she went on duty?
She did have training in two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, this this was a trial product, and I understand, yeah.
You you're missing, you're missing my point, okay, you have a responsibility as a licensee, right? To sell alcohol, okay? That responsibility requires you to make sure that you do not sell anything to minors. And that all of your products are clearly recognized by your, the people that are selling them. That that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what, I think what your honor is saying is, did anybody come and say to your cashiers?
We we fully understand, yeah.
This is a new product that we're gonna be selling, it's alcohol, you need to card everybody. Did they do that?
Uh, yeah.
Or do they, did they just place a new product on the floor and expect your cashiers to know?
Uh I don't have that information as I sit here today, but I did want to explain that immediately after this incident, of course, there was additional training. The following day, we do have records of her training. We do take the commission and its authority very seriously, I respect your and understand your statements. And we're not contesting the penalty, we are asking that you simply consider this uh in the context of of considering the penalty.
No, I'm sure, let let me just make one thing perfectly clear. Okay, so your clerk sold this to a minor. Left your establishment and went on to one of the most deadly highways in the city and county of Honolulu, is that not correct? Do you have constant accidents where people lose their lives going up and down that road from Wahiwat to Haleiwa? Now this individual that was a minor, right, crosses the center line and kills an innocent family. That's our responsibility is to protect the safety and welfare of the general public. How do we accept that, and how does Castle and Cook accept that?
We, uh you know, everybody is very fortunate, there was nobody on the road in this incident, and nobody was driving. You know, the, there is, uh in addition to the training that happened the following day, a register prompt system. So now, when a product comes to the floor, the clerk is prompted by the cash register before they can ring through the sale. So yes, we do take safety a concern.
Thank you.
Uh Castle and Cook does uh want to uh be in compliance. And with that in mind, uh with your indulgence, Mister Fukuhara would like to address the commission before we proceed.
Good evening, Commission, Troy Fukuhara, Vice President and Assistant Secretary for Castle and Cook Properties. As the commission knows, Castle and Cook has been around for many, many years. Our roots run very deep in Hawaii, we strive to be very good citizens in the state, we do care about the community, and we do care about doing the right thing. I think there's a big difference between making a mistake on the one hand, and a willful and wanton disregard of the law on the other hand. In this instance, we submit it was an honest mistake on the part of our clerk, it's an unfortunate mistake, but it was a mistake, we admit that part. Since um since this incident has occurred, as Ms. Baile had mentioned. We have taken steps to prevent instances like this from happening in the future, and that does include being sure that the register prompts for ID. We also are putting up a new product board for our employees, so that they understand when there's a new product, whether it's alcoholic or not. This is a new product, familiarize yourself with it, because it's going to be on the floor, so we have taken that step. Uh for the um. For the reasons stated by Ms. Baile, um we request leniency and also ask that if there is going to be a penalty. That it be commensurate with the circumstances set forth this evening.
Um, Ms. Ms. Neely, was this part of our compliance as far as it was?
Yes.
So this is something that we conduct in partnership, I believe, with the School of Medicine, the University of Hawaii.
University, yeah.
Um and this is a test. And you folks should have been notified that we were going to be doing this, we send out notifications to all licensees. That there will be dequests coming around, that there is a compliance check coming through. And so it is your responsibility as the licensees. Not the employees and licensees, to make sure all of your employees. Are aware that these compliance checks are occurring, that they are a test. And it's to, it's a, it's a spot check, because we know if you fail this test, you're probably failing. Uh in other regards, that how many times has a minor come in that wasn't part of our compliance program? And purchased alcohol from your establishment, and you didn't even know. And so in order to, uh this is, this is a test, this is not, you made a mistake, this is, you knew this was going to occur, and you failed. So our question is, how many other times have you failed and didn't get caught? Uh so with that in mind, uh we 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 take your plea for leniency into consideration, but in fairness to other um licensees. My motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
The move in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
I I vote our agenda item number twenty nine, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
On the agenda item number thirty, I A Shell.
Yeah, my name is Avio Kumora, I A Shell owner.
Um the charges honor about June, oh, I need to spell it. Okay, honor about June twenty third, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor. Or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Edna Lynn Nakapui. At the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty one dash seventy eight B one A of the Hawaii Rice Statutes. Mister Okumora, how would you like to plead?
Uh no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, second.
The move in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number thirty one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. Uh while there were previous violations in two thousand five and two thousand eight for adjudication purposes, this is a first violation, so I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars. Mister Okumora, what happened? What happened?
What happened? You know, we train our employees when they start, we get ID cards, you know, that um we ID. We have a register that anything, cigarettes or alcohol. It has a, you have to put a date on, we tell them to ask the people who buy. You know, if you're old enough, you know, over twenty one. But apparently. The criminal side, the judge dismissed it because she didn't have her glasses on.
Well, that's not our concern, but this is a separate, this is a separate adjudication hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's not your concern, but. But, you know, I.
This is for your liquor license, sir.
But it's one thing, you know, we don't ask them if, you know, they can. I mean, I'm not around to see if they have their glasses on all the time, yeah? I mean, I asked her now, after I found out. But, so you know, she did ask the, when that person came in for the ID. But she must have read the date wrong. I mean, that's something unexpected for us, yeah?
Ms. Neely, in this particular, in this specific instance, um was the ID asked for? Uh yeah, that's correct, uh the clerk asked for ID within the alcohol. And she presented a vertical ID? Uh that's correct. I mean, your, your cashier cannot see so well, they cannot even see a vert- whether it's vertical or horizontal, perhaps they shouldn't be checking IDs anymore.
See, I I asked her, but I guess apparently she must have misread it, because I mean, that's. That's the only thing I can think of, she's had been the wrong number, and she she has all the.
So. This is your, this is your license, sir, this is your license premises, so you're responsible for the action of your employees.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know that, that, I know that, that, but that's why it's the only thing I can figure out, she has the card in place, she has the register in place. So I mean, everything's in place, and she asked for the ID, but.
I repeat what I said to the previous.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's why.
License, that we send you folks out notices that which we don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, I I I spoke, I spoke to her already, you know, I wish.
So did you see the notice?
I guess she just must have misread it, I I don't know, I wasn't there.
Okay, well, this is a test, and you failed.
Yeah, I know.
And I will remind you that we can um fine you up to two thousand dollars, and we can suspend or revoke your license. And this is a very serious violation, and we take it seriously. So I would encourage you to take it more seriously, and encourage your employees to take it very seriously. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
The move in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote our agenda item number thirty, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Can we take a shot recess before we go into agenda item number thirty? Let's go, alright, okay? Alright, uh. We are now back on the official re- uh record, calling agenda item number thirty one, Chulang Shubert Quat, chairperson downtown ne- uh Chinatown Neighborhood Board number thirteen.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Um you can excuse yourself, this this is uh.
Okay. Oh, I'm.
You you can excuse yourself, this is um Ms.
I'm.
Well, I think she does need to, she's the the technical respondent.
Okay, okay, right, okay.
Okay, alright.
I was confused.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, uh I have provided you with uh a little uh information that I will be speaking on.
Can I have a point, order please?
Sorry, please.
Okay.
Can we please have everyone put their names on the record?
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have to say? No.
Just state your name for the record.
Okay, Chulang Shubert Quat. Uh downtown Chinatown, uh neighborhood thirteen chairman. And I'm pleased to be here, and thank you so much for listening to this.
Okay, I'm sorry, hold one second, if you could introduce yourself.
Nicole, Nicole Reed, R E I D, from Arts Culture Mentions etc. Group, and to my right.
Uh Marty Simjian, S I M J I A N, up next door.
Thank you.
Uh. Thank you, I've provided each one of you uh the information that I want to share with you. And on the very top is a map. Uh covering our neighborhood fourteen, which is a broad area that we represent. And that of course, every two years, there's an election, how to elect board members uh from the community, and not everyone who is a citizen. Uh also can vote and participate in the neighborhood affairs. In order to coordinate our city services and keep our neighborhood safe uh and and happy. We are here to appeal the eleven um PM uh permission given to first Fridays. And hope that you will. and hope that you will be able to scale it back to ten, which is a community longstanding um, consent and compromise to work with the arts district to try to balance the needs of the community with the needs of the business folks. And, and this has been going on for over fifteen years, uh, with this cooperation between the community and the arts district. But however, about six years ago, things changed because the Adma Arts District Merchants Association, the five one C four, which is a merchant nonprofit group to benefit merchants, took first Friday and block parties to an insane level, leading to the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen joint fact finding project commissioned by Councilmember Carol Fukunaga, State Representative Cal Rhodes, and uh, Senator John Oakland. Even Honolulu the Commission's Assistant Administrator participated in the joint fact finding. And she stated for the record regarding street parties and alcohol, too many, too loud, and too drunk. Adma was viewed negatively by the community, which led to change in its name to Adme, Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera. And Nicole became the head of, of this, uh, group. And First Friday events, to do First Friday events to drive more business for those eight participating bars. And I know that there may be occasional other merchants who participate. And we feel that it is Adme's job to pay for their promotion of this event through funding they have control of and force issue for another hour of liquor sales to help pay for the expenditure. This is a slippery road logic. The public supports a simple art walk, not loud music or band or more alcohol sales, which is already happening inside bars and restaurants. This one more, small areas, about seventy-six liquor licensees, about fifteen new music. Adme could should get the city to support them or their wholesalers or participating merchants. If not enough merchants are willing to pitch in, then do not do it. Why hold our community at ransom and pay your bills when truly only eight bars benefit the most? We should not succumb to this economic responsibility when it is the passion of the Adme leaders wanting it and yet not willing to pay for their own programs. Scale down, let it be an art walk and family event instead of always using alcohol and loud music as a draw to bring in the young people. The fact that it is poorly attended speaks for the failure of First Friday organizers for repeating the same old tiring loud music, more alcohol and more music programming, more noise programming. Adding a mural painting as an excuse to do First Friday is just an excuse. Month after month, the mural is incomplete. In that, is that the real public purpose for closing down our streets and selling more alcohol and pushing for loud music? Who wants the mural and what is the mural for? First Friday should be art and promoting eating and drinking inside restaurants. Having something special like a food festival featuring a different menu each month instead of the same old loud music. Bring in Hawaiian folk, classical, and other music for variety. Make it a monthly fun event for the family. Start early by organizing a walking tour and poo poo tasting to all the participating restaurant. Then those who stay out for the full dinner, good for them. What is so hard about this? Why Tiki does not follow allow alcohol in your street parties and Chinatown does? But being nice should not mean we have, we, we want to be stepped on over and over. Let's keep to decent hour of ten PM. Adme cannot force the community to pay its bills. Spend your own money on your own program, please. Do not be greedy and force others to endure another hour liquor on the streets. Did you know Senator Chan Oakland, with support from many committee associates, said that only bona fide five one C three should be allowed of these twenty-five dollar special licenses and block party permits and hours limited to ten PM for both liquor sales and music. Five one C three benefits community and charity giving. Five one C four do not give to community charity. It is a self benefiting organization and donations to five one C four are not tax deductible and their tax returns are not open. The Neighborhood Board Thirteen of Downtown Chinatown passed yearly resolution to maintain music and street alcohol to ten PM. As a good community compromise to area liquor merchants and urge merchants to not use block parties as a means to increasing the bottom line. But for public purpose and public benefit than Murphy's U H Benefit Drives, Literacy Program and, and Hawaii Theater Fund Drives. First Friday is a community art walk, is a community benefit. Selling more alcohol or liquor for more hours to get more manifestation for Fridays is not. We also H L C to not grant eleven PM sales on our streets and pull this premise back to ten PM. Look at Chinatown and Downtown. We have so- over seventy, seventy-six liquor licenses, about ten retail and two head dressing shops sell liquor. We have drunks drinking on our sidewalks, acting in decent, loud, and quarrelsome. We are at the start of a sit-like community action by area merchants who have to deal with illegal sales of liquor to these addicts. Three of these retail stores are open twenty-four hours or so. There is less money and H L C staff around to enforce. Why then increase the first hour, First Friday liquor sale to satisfy a few merchants over an entire community? Honolulu Liquor Commission is committed to public welfare and safety of our community and serves all of Honolulu. Please, listen to the voices of the community. The few committed individuals like yourselves are serving without pay to help our community. Neighborhood thirteen members are elected individuals by their community. Neighborhood Board Thirteen members are, are elected individuals by their neighbors to represent their voices. That is our system. How many votes we get is not the issue. The issue is representative government. The neighbors do not elect their bar owners. Please, show support for area legislators, neighborhood board members that they speak for their community. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you. Uh, I just want to show you a sign that's so bad, that's happening, that we have to be working on this. We have a lot of, too many liquor in already. So, I hope you know that we are doing our best, um, to help our community to reduce uh, the footprint of liquor and also a lot of drunks on our street. So, promoting a lot liquor is not to us a viable solution. I think bringing healthy programs, food, attraction, poupous, and now walking around checkout shops and things are better. It can start off earlier, like five thirty, famously, after work and go down, enjoy. And not always push the envelope of more music on the street and more liquor on the street and get funny. Don't, don't because you have the expense that you need to sell more. And that's not, not healthy for our community at this point.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Quoc?
I thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Neely.
Ms. Shaw.
Um, Ms. Quoc, you mentioned in your statement that, uh, you, you mentioned Murphy's, that he does provide benefit drives as well. Um, Murphy's is also well known for the St. Patrick's Day event.
Yes, and some of it was very badly run and I've testified written to liquor commissioner, written to, to uh, Assistant, um, Administrator, I've written to my legislators. In the last few years, he had run it badly because they're too big, it's out of control. And then I think in the last one, even the music was past the time. But we discussed it with him. And I think he's aware now that he needs to go back because the area that he has is really too small for the crowd that he attracts. And it isn't a problem, it is an issue.
Um, and I do want to correct you that we don't allow twenty-four hour liquor sales in the city.
Yes, I, I know that. I know that the retail stores are open twenty-four hours. But it's hard to find they are not selling liquor in the bin because they sell liquor like soda in the bin, in the ice bin.
If they're, if they're violating, if they're selling alcohol after hours, then please call in to.
Yes, we know. We know that, but there's, there's enforcement needed to catch them. And now, we have informed our HPD about certain stores doing that because we've seen the purchases. People drinking from, purchases from there. They break the pack from six pack, twelve pack to individual cans or bottles and sell them like soda.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, for the record, that the liquor commission does not allow twenty-four hour liquor sales.
I know that, I know that, but they're open, they can open twenty-four hours, but they're limited from six to twelve to sell.
Yes, that is correct.
Ms. Quoc, Ms. Quoc, can we stick to the issue that we're here?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, okay. Uh, by share, man.
If nothing further.
Any other further questions?
Can I just have a comment?
Yes, by share, uh, kind of on the.
Ms. Quoc, I've, um, taken the liberty and always taken the, the issues that the Neighborhood Board has brought up. And part of our, my education process has been that I have read two years of minutes of your Neighborhood Board meetings. And I'm kind of caught a little off guard because hearing this representation today about, you know, how you feel about certain events or what's happening. I've never seen it vocalized throughout the minutes on concerns or anything that the commission should be aware of.
Uh, I have always been very vocal about street parties and block parties for many, many years. And I have served on the li- on the, um, Neighborhood Board since two thousand twelve. And I was in chair in those days and I just became chair this July. And, but I have been very vocal and I've also been quite, uh, willing to write letters to, uh, Manager Director, BTS, and all that. And I have always copied H L C.
Well, like in the minute, so to speak, because I don't attend the meeting. Uh, like I said, I've read two years, uh, what's been agendaed and what kind of concerns come up within the area
Yeah.
because it is a very vocal, um, Neighborhood Board.
Yes.
And I've followed it aggressively to make sure that there isn't anything that we are going to be broadsided with or anything that's on the agenda that we're not aware of. So, as my own personal knowledge, I've done that. In the minute process, I have seen certain objections, um, from other members um, in which I'm assuming as a board, not all the time you guys will see eye to eye on certain issues. But it, on oppositions or comments, it's been duly noted in the minutes. But I haven't, again, I taken the liberty to go back and check and it seems like it was a good relationship from what I've read. Everything from their events to Murphy's to, from what I've read and what's published online. It seems like it's always been a, um, a cordial, very good relationship. So, receiving this today and seeing what you've just presented today is new news to us today, or what to me, I'm going to speak on behalf of myself. Um, is new news to me seeing that now there's a lot of objection and suggestions on, and funding and all this other stuff.
Well, let me go back a little bit because I'm not in charge of the agenda and we have to stick to our agenda in a Neighborhood Board meeting. And the, the flow of the agenda, as you know, it is controlled by the chair. So, the chair's report is at the very end of our agenda when you look back on your minutes. And there's hardly discussion because there was no time. And I have written my letters and emails to many, many people concerning Murphy's. I have written Murphy, Murphy himself, to the liquor commission, to, to my Carol Fukunaga, uh, council member. I've been very open and vocal, but at times, at the Neighborhood Board, there's no opportunity to really bring this up because it's not on the agenda. So, I just want you to know that.
I guess, I mean, when I do see it on the agenda, even then, um, I do see comments and, um, you know, specific comments pointed and I haven't seen any. So, like I said, um, collaboratively as a board, I would expect to see some feedback going back and forth. Just like when we have this meeting here, um, we're all aware of what was said, whether we were here or not. And I haven't had the footage of being here at the last meeting, but I have documentation to know what has been said here.
But you, you must aware, let's share that, there's a, there's a traditional and open policy observed by, by our area legislators and our Neighborhood Board voted a couple of times to support ten PM. Even when Nicole came to the Neighborhood Board because of the closure, she said she's in favor of ten o'clock because she's aware the Neighborhood Board wants ten o'clock. But when she comes before you to apply for special license, she asked for twelve o'clock. And she has communication with other stakeholders in our district. Insisted that she has asked for, follow the, the Neighborhood Board and the area legislators, uh, you know, uh, uh, cooperative consent that is ten o'clock. But they continue to push for twelve o'clock with you. And the explanation she told me and the other lady was, her partners wanted it and there's nothing much you can do, she's just going to present it. So, there's a contradiction from the representation to us and to you. Because she submit twelve o'clock to you, she tells us she's going for ten. We can't force anybody to do anything, uh, they want before a different board. But that is misleading, misleading information to me and to the other lady who happens to be the owners association and attends a board with her. She pointed this out, I think, um, brought up in a letter to H L C that even through an email that Ms. Nicole Reed has sent to her, she said ten, but she submit twelve. Couple of days before even replied the email to this lady. So, I don't know whether it's stress, overwork, but it's, it's totally two different pictures. And now, like, like we are community advocates, we want the best for the community and we're not trying to ask too much. We think that to observe the ten PM would help everybody and bring peace and harmony. Whereas when, when, uh, liquor board grants the eleven o'clock on that premise of it come in me. To us, it doesn't seem to be serving the best interest of a community with a longstanding practice, everybody understand. You know that when liquor is on at eleven, liquor is off, there's a lot of work that's need to be done, extra enforcement. Everybody has more work to do, even though we, we even asked for, please, make sure the security is there to three AM because we have, I live in the area, we hear the fight, we hear the noise. When most of you think, if you're outside of my block party, it's on by response, you're gonna push them out my door is into your neighbor's room, but it's not fair to the community. We want them to succeed. We support First Friday. But we want better management and better compromise that everybody's happy, not just a few people.
Thank you.
That's my message to you, yeah.
Good, okay. Ms. Reed, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. Um, first, thank you for the time to discuss this extension. Um, to clarify the issue of me misleading the board, um, I work in a democratic, uh, group of four other merchants to decide how we are going to proceed with the First Friday event. So, initially, I believe, uh, Chairperson Chulane Shubert Quoc was referring to Lee Stack of the Chinatown Improvement District in an email that I had sent her, I think in March. Um, and this was when we were first starting out and this is when I was trying to get in touch with her to meet with her, uh, to dialogue on this event, knowing that she was going to have opposition to our Beer and Wine Garden. So, I tried to, uh, communicate with her instead of meeting. She missed it. And so, in an effort to communicate with her before our Neighborhood Board meeting, um, for our initial event in April, uh, I had let her know that it was our intent at that time to go to ten PM, which it was and which we did. Um, seeing that we had success from April through now, despite our setbacks with the weather and otherwise, um, it was at that point that we submitted for September, October, November that we would do or try for a twelve o'clock, which is within the legal right of, of the license. So, when I presented to the Neighborhood Board, I presented, uh, that I personally am fine with ten PM. But I am responsible to the group of people that I work with to respect their choices and their desires as well. I don't speak on behalf of them. I represent all of our interests. And so, they, being the majority of our group, wanted to go and still desire to go till midnight with service. So, I presented it as such. Whether it was misinterpreted, I apologize. But that is pretty clearly what I stated, um, at the Neighborhood Board. And that's where the email had come from, was from back in March. Um, that's the clarification on that point. Um, as far as the additional resources on the city, um, we meet all of our city requirements to not only replace and take out the trash and steady liners, but we also, uh, hire our special duty officers to maintain our event. I've spoken with the major for our area and he has said that because of the size being not a Murphy's St. Patrick's Day event, but something much smaller, um, that there aren't any additional resources that they're currently devoting to our event. Um, that he can say with confidence is a direct result. Um, that he can say with confidence is a direct result. Um, I asked him for the incidences for the previous month and they included a homeless person trying to direct traffic and a a person who had alcohol uh intolerance. So I uh, we do our best to communicate with those public services and D T S also uh is on site to make sure that we're we're doing that and maintaining those um those commitments. Um, as far as um doing our due diligence to maintain the public health and safety by closing the streets, I think it's important to uh correct the history of of how we got here where the city initially allowed us to do a public safety closure. But after two years of doing the public safety closure, they found that it was actually illegal for us to hire special duty officers without a street closure permit. So we were in essence illegally paying the cops, unbeknownst to us, and the city brought that forward through D T S. So it was at that point that they said you need to have an event, we need to have something if you guys wanna close the streets to protect your patrons. So First Friday, as you know, has gone through a great increase. And when I opened my business in two thousand nine, it was a major reason why we decided to to open in Chinatown was for an event that brought a great amount of people that was able to supply us with revenue that allowed us to stay open um throughout the drought days, which is pretty much Monday, Sunday through Thursday in Chinatown. Um, so it's not just bars that benefit, it is restaurants. Um, our membership isn't eight bars. Um, our membership depends on what initiatives we're following. So for First Friday, it is predominantly bars and restaurants that do directly see the value in it. But it is also retailers, um, it is also white collar uh office workers in second floors. Um, and we're working on other initiatives. One has been to move the River of Life food service to find them a variated space to serve so that we can kind of lessen the impact on our merchants to dealing with the the houseless population. Another one goes into building a dog park. So our our merchants, although being a five oh one C four, none of our board members are paid. And our financials are online through I R S, they're very clear. But because we don't break the fifty thousand dollar threshold, we are required to submit a nine ninety and postcard, not a full direct outline. So um, it is there to to say that point. Um, we actually had to kind of show a proof of concept with this event to get other people invested. So now that we have shown that we can do it, we have shown that people like to go and they want to go and they will go. Um, we did see our highest revenues uh last month than we've seen previous months, but it still again comes quite short of of covering the cost. So what we're considering doing, um, and we've been approached by Mark's Garage, a nonprofit uh that does arts right up the street on New Mone. Um, we're gonna activate empty vacant building spaces with artists and installations to promote and encourage the early five thirty um crowds to come back and look for art. Um, but we are, of course, facing an uphill battle with Kakaako, their art food bug scene, uh even Waikiki all the way down Akapalaina. Um, so we're seeing this as a way to A, protect our clients and the majority of them where the public safety issue comes in is for the two A M licenses when we do have a a mass amount of people exiting from about four to five spaces. And that on our small sidewalks creates a public safety hazard, which was the initial reason why D T S and the bus asked us to close the street again anyway. So that's where the impetus for us closing the street has come. It's, we don't wanna see one of our patrons uh get hurt. Um, but we also are invested now um about four forty-five hundred each into this event. Um, and we would at least like to try to break even, if not make some of that back. But our intention, if this event can be run through cost sharing, which is possibility now that other places have seen um what we're doing and they believe in it, we can mitigate the costs and defray overhead that way. Um, as far as sponsorship goes, we don't want to promote the beer and wine as being something to drop. We don't want to put up signs from promoters or from distributors, which they usually require if you take free money from them or product from them. So we've purposely gone away from that because that's not what we wanna do or promote the event as. So um, that source of income is also unstable and not really longevity based for a monthly event of our style. Um, and I'll I'll wrap it up, um. As far as using alcohol and loud music, um, I think I've said it before that the term alcohol is kind of harsh, this is low alcohol beverage or uh yeah, A B V items, beer, wine, no hard liquor on the street. We do understand that that does bring a different type of responsibility. Um, and our organization is not a promotion group, it's not a guy that comes in and does events. It's licensees that have a vested interest in seeing the success and the safety of this event be done well so that we can continue it. Um, but we also understand that we don't want people to overindulge or to get excessive. So we keep liquor inside where we can manage them and we can be very vigilant. Um, so ideally, the day would be that I wouldn't have to come here for a liquor license that we could defray the costs and that's what we're working towards. Um. I won't take up any more time. Thank you very much.
Very much. So commissioners, do you have any question? I I just have one question.
Yes.
Okay. For that area that you hold your against and or used, is that a special district, business district?
So it is a special district, there are so many, I get them confused. Um, it's a historic prote- protected district, it's a special district. And then it's also um a B M X for mixed use business residential district.
Is it also it's a business, it's a Chinatown improvement district or Chinatown?
So there's a clarification that I think is really important in that. Um, Waikiki has a five oh one that is a bid, business improvement district, much like Fort Street. That allows them certain controls over their lands, um, transportation, liquor is one of them, parties permitting. There's a special process for getting a Waikiki permit through D T S, it's a lottery. Um, Chinatown doesn't have that because the landowners can't agree to pay the extra money to fund the bid to manage these things. Um, the Chinatown Improvement District is a five oh one C three that is uh by Lee Stack, one of a property owner um who has a a few property owners. I'm not sure the meetings aren't open or posted or or anything. So I I'm, I know that there's three people um that are in that organization and then they affiliate with others to do other great projects like walking tours and courtyard tours. But they don't have the availability or ability um or to to make those rules or have that kind of purview over the area.
I would like to make a comment, um, just uh cause I I I would say for the record that I'm on, I went to H P. Um, and when I started at H P, Chinatown was not a nice place. Chinatown had almost no business.
Why did you do it?
Besides, you know, a couple liquor stores. It was a very scary place to go in at night. Lots of vagrants, lots of homeless, and I don't think it has increased. In fact, I think that there was a lot of homeless and drug activity there when I started at H P. While I was at H P, First Friday event started. And that was what brought a lot of art to the community, lots more businesses. Um, and that's when I started even venturing into Chinatown because I was too scared to go there besides First Friday. And that's when I really got acquainted with the neighborhood. That's when businesses started moving in to the neighborhood to try and improve the area. And it also, it was really First Friday that was the impetus for that. I would have never gone to Chinatown if it wasn't for First Friday. And I think that a lot of people would not go to Chinatown if it wasn't the condition that it was when I first started at Holy Pacific University. Um, so I do appreciate this as a longstanding event in the community that I think has had a great benefit to that area um that I witnessed personally over the course of about fifteen years. Um, and it has changed, you know, and I do recognize Miss Quok's um concern that it, you know, it started as you go into a gallery, you you know, they have some sort of special art uh exhibit or something occurring and they were serving the alcohol inside of the art galleries. Mark's Garage was a participant and that early adopter. Um, and it has changed over the years. It it's gotten really, really big at one point. Um, and I think it has scaled down since then. Um, but this is uh, I think, an event that is valuable for the community. Um, and that I, and I speak for myself, not the rest of the commission, I would like to see continue and to continue to help and improve the area. Not just for, you know, not just for the residents that live there, but also for the broader Honolulu community that really cherishes this area and does not wanna see it go back to the days of when nobody wanted to go there and no businesses wanted to operate there. Um, so that's my statement for the record.
We have any other questions or type of action?
Um, motion to convene into executive session.
The movement's second, all those in favor? I, I vote I, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are back from executive session. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with counsel. And with that being said, commissioners, do you have other type of action?
Question. Motion to approve the request for consideration, second.
The movement's second, all those in favor?
Finally.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The chair votes nay, no action will be taken on this request.
So you will won't say eleven?
Calling agenda number twenty-two. Do we have any administrative matter?